Bam, I said, okay, I'll check in the morning.
All right, it is seven o'clock, so if I just ask everybody to find a seat. And we will convene the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, April 1st, 2024. And I will begin the meeting by asking everybody to rise for a brief invocation. Tonight, as we meet, we are ever mindful of the many issues that surround us and our world about us. And we are ever thankful for all those who are seeking to bring peace and harmony and goodwill and understanding to this world. And we are there as part of the community. We want to progress with that message. Tonight also, we just ask for direction and understanding as the city council acts on the issues before them, knowing that in the hearts and minds of each of them, they are here to do what they feel is in the best interest of Batavia and the world around us. Tonight also, we want to ask for a special blessing from those who are in our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that a special blessing be shown on them and all the men and women from our country who are with them as they go about their vital missions. Tonight also, we just ask for understanding by the city council and working with each other and knowing that each one of us is here to do what they feel is in the very best interest of Batavia and its future. And we ask for all these blessings. Amen. Who wants to do pledge of allegiance? So I have a volunteer. Alderman Mike.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we were called for the role, please.
Barazza. Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peiper.
Here.
Chanset.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serone. Vocal singer. Two absent, twelve present.
Very good. We have a quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four is a reminder that if you're going to address the city council tonight, either the members of the council or from the audience, that you please come forward and use the mic because this is all being photographed and recorded by BATV. And if you don't use the microphone, many people can't hear what you are saying. So we just put that reminder out there. Do we have any items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda from the council? All right, as you all, I believe, know, we sent out a memo that at this point, we are going to ask for a motion to recess for a few minutes and ask for a special committee of the whole meeting to discuss the item that is before us. So somebody care to make that in the form of a motion?
We're going to do that after this meeting, immediately after this meeting.
Oh, I thought it says here we were doing it at 7:05.
We just have to do it after the regular council meeting is set up for time.
Okay, well, I'm just going by what I was handed here. Okay, then, moving right along. Do we have any items? Nobody's got anything to change, so we'll present the consent agenda, Alderman Chanset?
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. For approvals, the March 29th, 2024 payroll in the amount of $1,8653.79. The accounts payable check register for March 18th through 29th, 2024, in the amount of $2,973,825.27. A 2023 budget transfer and reconciliation. Resolution 24-49-R approving preliminary and final plan for Zimberoff subdivision. Resolution 24-55-R authorizing amendment, task order 42 with Engineering Enterprises, Inc., for construction engineering services of the 2023-24 lead and galvanized steel water service replacement project. Resolution 24-53-R authorizing execution of a one-year renewable contract for the 24 through 28 mosquito abatement program. That's with Clark Environmental Management, Inc. Resolution 24-50-R authorizing execution of an IDOT certificate of authority form. Resolution 24-29, amending the liquor code for allowance of live entertainment for Class H licenses and hours of sale. Resolution 24-51-R authorizing an agreement with Administrative Consulting Specialists LLC for grant writing and administration services. Resolution 24-26, authorizing the sale of the northeast corner of Deer Path Road and Main Street property by solicitation of bids. Ordinance 24-30, vacation of Meadow Drive turnaround right-of-way. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Sulfah for the approval of the consent agenda. Do we have anybody, any questions, comments? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peiper.
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to item seven, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anything? All right, moving to item nine, recognition of Carolyn Burnham for 10 years of service on the--
Item eight, Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, moving then to item eight, Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Thank you for not forgetting about me on April Fool's Day. That would have been hurtful. Thanks for letting me speak tonight. I just have a couple of things I want to say. First, I want to again extend the invitation to you for our upcoming Inspire Celebration on April 25th at Revelry 675. We're privileged to honor exceptional individuals and organizations who have made remarkable contributions to our community. This year, we are proud to celebrate Marge and Dave Brown as the 2023 Citizens of the Year, along with Batavia RSVP receiving the Spirit of Batavia Award. Additionally, the Fox Valley Patriotic Organization and the Flag Day Committee will be recognized with the Batavia Impact Award. And we will be honoring businesses that have significantly invested in our community with our special Ole Awards. Our heartfelt congratulations to Larson Packaging, Mocha Coffee, Aqua Viva, Batavia Animal Clinic, Imagine Entertainment, Grainology Brew Stillery, JT's Tavern and Tap, and New Moon Vegan. Please visit our website to register for this event and for additional details. As an added incentive, we will be hosting a raffle for our five-day stay in Louisville, Kentucky, inclusive of a bourbon tour experience. Additionally, we will hold a wine and bourbon pull to raise funds during the celebration. We are still accepting donations of wine and bourbon, so if you wish, please drop them off at the chamber if you'd like to contribute. And another exciting announcement, the chamber is thrilled to offer an opportunity to explore the beauty of Italy. Join us for a trip to Pompeii and Amalfi Coast, departing on October 22nd, 2024. Oh, I'm sorry, October 24th, 2024 is the actual date it's leaving. This seven-night journey includes accommodations in a first-class hotel and the guidance of a professional tour manager. An informational meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April 9th, at 5:30 at Sturdy Shelter. Take advantage of the early bird discount extended through April 14th. I would like to extend a warm welcome to the businesses that recently joined our chamber community. MAE Photo Booths, NAMI KDK, America Loves Flooring, Stars on Digital Marketing, String Design, Goosehead Insurance, Luke Laner Agency, and Jacob Gernand, Southwest Real Estate. The Batavia Chamber also tries to support our NFP, not-for-profit members, that do so much for our community. We have three special upcoming events to provide support for them. Our monthly not-for-profit forum that we host on the first Wednesday of every month will be this Wednesday at 8:00 AM. This is a group of 20 to 25 not-for-profit leaders that meet to exchange and develop new ideas each month. On Thursday, May 2nd, we're bringing an AI expert, Dr. Jean Hess, to talk to our not-for-profit leaders on how to use artificial intelligence to fill out grant applications productively. And lastly, the chamber is hosting a volunteer fair at the Batavia Public Library on Thursday, May 9th, from 2:00 to 7:00 PM. We'll have about 40 local charity organizations represented to give them visibility in our community. In addition, this is a benefit toward the tri-city residents who want to find roles that align with their passion and skills. We will have volunteer opportunities for all ages, from elementary to retirement. If you and your friends and your family are looking for ways to help others and get involved in our community, please let them know about our volunteer fair on Thursday, May 9th. I'd like to remind everyone of the many educational networking opportunities the chamber's offers. We have an Economic Outlook Networking Luncheon on Thursday, April 4th. I'm going with Anthony Easton to that event. We have a luncheon learn about unlocking the power of ethical persuasion, strategies for reducing uncertainty, on Friday, April 5th. We have a ribbon cutting for Geneva Winery on River Street on Friday, April 5th at 4:00 PM. Come join us. We have a Batavia Women in Business. Mary Ann Renner is speaking on how to be your best when things are at their worst. That is Tuesday, April 9th at 11:30. Our Coffee and Commerce Morning Networking will be at Comfort Inn on next Wednesday, April 10th, at ADM. And we have an evening networking at Sturdy Shelter, spotlighting Fox Valley Food for Health, on April 17th at 4:30. Does anybody have any questions for me before I introduce my guest?
Any questions?
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for listening. I hope to see you at our events. I would like to introduce Andy, the owner of Cado, the new dog, premier dog supply, ultimate paradise, that is now located at River Street and Wilson Street, to come up and talk about his wonderful business. We just celebrated his ribbon cutting about a week and a half ago. Line up, Andy.
All right, thank you. Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me here. Just wanted to kind of get the word out a little bit about our new shop that I've started. It's Cado and Company, and we specialize in, as far as our tagline is concerned, purveyors of pet elegance. So we provide a little bit of everything to primarily the pet parents, as well as the pets themselves, upscale, high-end pet items. We have clothing, books, decor, artwork, knickknacks, housewares, again, a little bit of everything that we're offering. We moved into the space at 103 East Wilson, and so far, so good with everything. And we are, as far as our hours, we're open Wednesday through Saturday, 10 to 5:00, and on Sundays, 12 to 4:00. So invite everybody to stop by, take a look. I'm sure we have something for everyone as far as if you like animals, if you like cats and dogs, we're going to have something for you, I'm sure. So anything else that I can, you know, tell anybody about it? Our website also, before I forget, cadoandcompany.com, C-A-D-O and company. We also are on Instagram and Facebook as well.
You got a phone number? Questions or comments? I had the honor of being down there last week with Margaret at the chamber, and we cut the ribbon for them. And at that ceremony, I noted that, as all of you, I think, no, this is on the northeast corner of River and Wilson, which formerly, last time, it was Six Plus Cypress Clothing Store. And I went back into history, probably almost 100 years back. And when the building was first built, it was a furniture store, and it was owned by two gentlemen. One was named Glenn Crane, and in addition to being a furniture store owner, he was also the town undertaker. And the other guy's name was Glenn Crane, and he was more into the furniture business. So they called themselves Crane and Swan Furniture Store. And they had a sign over the front of the building that said, Crane and Swan Furniture, let these birds feather your nest. And that was kind of a legendary sign of Batavia for many years with Crane and Swan, let these birds feather your nest. And I commented last Friday, kind of a correlation of the history, it's kind of a swing back to the original days when we, now we've got animals again being the headliner of the store over there. So just shows you, take 100 years, and you can kind of return a spot to its same original location of what they were trying to do.
Everything comes full circle, exactly. And we're pet-friendly as well, so if anyone wants to come by, feel free to bring your animals in as well. All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you for coming. All right, now matters from the public, you mean? Oh, recognition, okay, yeah, Carolyn Burnham. And I think Carolyn's here, are you not? Why don't you join me up at the podium for me? They're going to take pictures and put you on TV and all this other good stuff. I just want to really officially publicly commend Carolyn Burnham because she has been a driving force in bringing alive and kind of putting together the environmental movement in Batavia. And when she started, you were one of them that started kind of this whole thing, I believe, if I remember.
I was a few years later.
Not too many, okay, all right. So what basically happened, if those of you who have been around for a while, we got into this rebuilding the riverbank and the riverfront, and we started building the Riverwalk. And that turned into a really fascinating community experience. And we had thousands of dollars donated, and lots of people came every Saturday morning and whatever have you. And as that thing continued to get fine-tuned, the conversation came up, what are we going to do about preserving the environment in a very supportive and friendly nature? And they said, well, why don't we form an environmental commission in Batavia that can give us recommendations? So we did, and I guess you were two years after the initial creation, but Carolyn's been a real moving force within that, and has been somebody who really has helped Batavia kind of understand a lot of the new things that are happening in the environment. And as we now see, we're all into, you know, electric vehicles, and we're into, you know, trying to cut back on things that pollute. And, you know, our latest garbage contract now has two separate garbage cans, one for environmental savings and the other one for your trash. And so we're getting better, I think, as time goes on. And right now, we are having a great community conversation about the bag fee. And I think now we've got some revenues from it. We're going to be able to do some environmental enhancements and services that we will be able to do using that fee. So your role in this and kind of helping push it along and move it along and bringing forth the idea so that it became understandable for the public and everybody else to understand, I think, has been a marvelous, you know, value to this community and one that you should be very, very proud in for all the time and effort you did for a totally volunteer, non-paying community service job, that you wanted to make sure Batavia on the environmental front was right there in the middle of things and going forth in the right directions. And so I just wanted to publicly commend you here tonight in front of the city council, and thank you for a very, very great job. We're certainly sorry to see you retire, but I'm sure your voice will be around if you think we need to know something or support some new idea or whatever it's going to come for.
I'm not leaving town.
Okay, you're not leaving town. Would you like to make any comments?
Sure. The first thing I'd like to say is it's really nice to come up here and not be asking for something. But in all seriousness, you know, it's really been a rewarding experience, you know, coming to this town. And I came from Michigan, and we're in a township and not a town, and just seeing how government works and being able to work with all the staff, all the council people over the years, it's just been a great experience for me. You know, there's been ups and downs, but I really think that we're moving in the right direction, and that gets me really excited. There's still a lot of work left to do, so I'm hoping the rest of the commissioners will get on that and the community as well. And I think one of the things I've learned about being in Batavia is that one person can make a difference here. The flip side of that is, is that if you want to make a change, you need to look at yourself, too, because if not me, then who? And I think everybody in this room are those people, but we just have to remember that, you know, we can be the change. So thank you.
Well, thank you. All right, moving to item 10, which is Resolution 24-043-R, opposing the 103rd Illinois General Assembly's House Bills 5021, Senate Bill 3637, House Bill 5315, and any other bills that may be amended to restrict the city's ability to solely govern its municipal utility. Who in the council wants to present this one? Laura.
Well, it was last week when this resolution was first presented, and Gary Holm put together a very nice memo that went point by point. Actually, two memos, because there was another one that I think he gave to us on the 13th, that outlines the reasons why these bills all would have a negative impact on our electric utility and thus on our residents in their current format. We decided to just move this on to this agenda without voting on it at the last meeting. Actually, we did vote on it at the last meeting, but it is on this for further consideration because Gary and I did have the opportunity to meet with Representative Hershaw earlier today, and I did send you an email letting you know that we had a very productive discussion with her. And as per usual, she is always willing to listen to what the issues are that we have. And while she did say that future conversations will be had and that we can work on changes and modifications, of course, that's not, you know, solely just within one person's hands. So at the conclusion of it, Steph still feels like it would be important to represent your views that these current versions of this legislation is not acceptable in order to encourage others to consider either making changes that make it more palatable, or oftentimes, in these cases, we heard that there are bad actors elsewhere, and that it's not, the city of Batavia seems to be handling these things really well. But I would think that one of the alternatives would maybe find a way to hold those bad actors responsible that doesn't have a negative impact on places that are trying to do things the right way. So I guess that's just kind of a summary of what we discussed, and that we still believe that city council should move forward with the resolution.
Question?
Yes.
Alderman Sean?
Based on your email and visit with our representative, is this premature? It seemed like, I got the impression that they're already making changes to it. Do we even know what we're really opposing or voting for at this point?
It is in committee right now, which means that that is where things are moving forward to being put onto the floor for a vote at some point in the future. If this was simply off in the Rules Committee, hadn't been assigned to the committee, in this case, energy and the environment, then I would agree with you that it seems to be kind of on the back burner and not a fully baked cake yet. But when things are in committee, they can very quickly move from committee to the floor to be acted upon.
Thank you. Question, the city council?
I'll just reiterate what I said at the committee of the whole meeting. I think the things that we've pulled out that are in the actual resolution that we would look at to approve are the parts of it that would restrict our own authority or impose other authority from the state that currently we do not have, you know, that they do not have over us, and really take some of the power away from us to control our own utility. The other parts of it that we, I think some of us agreed on, that there are newer things in there that they have that may be something we would want, we would, you know, that was Laura's and Gary's job to talk to Representative Hershaw about. Those things, I think, are okay, but in totality of the bills, the things that would restrict us are the things that we put into the resolution that we would like to, you know, tell them that we don't want, the things that would restrict our abilities. And that's the things I think we need to make sure that we send downstate and let them know that. So while they are discussing this, and it is in a committee where it could get out onto the floor, they need to know that ahead of time before they get, you know, to vote on it, and we don't have the chance to be able to state our opposition to those parts of it. So that's the things that I think we should send out and say that. And if that gives them pause to not move it out on the floor, and the other representatives to contact us and ask us why, and deal with, you know, the other municipalities that would be affected by this before they get this out onto the floor, I think this is the time to do it.
I would certainly endorse that idea because there's a lot of complexity to this whole thing, and I think it's good that we ID'd specifically what our concerns were. Alderman Beck?
I would say that our resolution is too vague, that it doesn't call out those specifics enough for me to feel comfortable supporting this. That I also had the opportunity to speak with Representative Dydak, who wrote the Solar Bill of Rights, and the Illinois Environmental Council, who helped him draft it. And, you know, their intention when using this as a follow-up to SEJA, that SEJA put out there the right, that, you know, we all have the right to self-generate now. We all have the right to be solar customers, which was huge and monumental for the state. But there were still, there were still bad actors out there putting a lot of impediments in front of residents to going solar. Excessive fees, excessive insurance requirements, HOAs are still at play, making restrictions in their covenants to restrict. That's why some of the language is a little fuzzy in there about shared roofs, and it applies here, it doesn't apply there. That was in response to, you can't have a solar panel on the front of your house, which meant you can't have a ring doorbell that's solar powered. That's what that was addressing, this whole amendment on the net metering piece and the having a shared policy. SEJA put in there the rights, and then there was no oversight to say, no, no municipalities, you have to play. And so this moves the needle. This gives some oversight, and this gives residents in the state that otherwise would have to go to the body, to the city council that was putting forth those unfair fees or those unfair requirements, and have someone else to advocate for them. And otherwise, they'd have to, what, I can't afford to take the city to court if I didn't like, if I needed to fight against a certain regulation that they weren't willing to budge on. I think it just gives, it gives individuals who want to see the state uphold its solar plans, its commitment to clean energy, that just want to have a future for our kids, we have to move in this direction. And this is removing those barriers to making it, making it a reality for places that it's not a reality yet. So there's a lot of good in these bills. I focus mostly on 5315. Those were the people that I was able to get ahold of in the past week. I don't like the language of, we oppose these, we will oppose all other bills within it that does similar things, because there are things that it's going to require us to do. It's going to change a few of our laws. So we are putting some of the good in with the bad and throwing it all out, and I'm not comfortable with that. If we want to do a more specific deep dive into all of those ramifications on how these bills will affect us-- on how these bills will affect us and send that note, you know, send an outline of what you talked to with Maura on to our legislators, I'd be super comfortable with that. But as written, I will not support this.
Anybody else? Alderman.
Yeah, I agree with Alderman Beck that it's too broad a statement, too broad a position to put out there that we're against it all. To say, these three, you know, bills, we're just against them. And that's sending a message out that, hey, Batavia's not willing to be a partner in solving these big problems that we do have. But the, you know, one thing that, there is some transparency in there. There is some, a change in exemption to Open Meetings Act, which could hold, you know, create some more transparency at different levels, which I think we're hearing loud and clear from many of our constituents, they want to see that. And so, to just say, yeah, we're opposed to it all, I think does a disservice where we, if we targeted and said, because I will agree, there are certain things in here that would not be good for Batavia, and I don't think are necessary for how we've handled our utility in Batavia, and targeting those. And I would be comfortable myself if we could target that and not just throw out the baby with the bathwater.
Anybody else? So, we have a motion and second on the floor? I know, that's why I'm asking the question.
Do we have any comments?
Yeah, do we, I guess my question here is, we want to take the council and have another meeting about this next week or something?
Put it on the next call agenda and talk about it again, if we want to try to get more specific on it. I just felt like, you know, the issues that were what would be of a harm or add, you know, I'll say, add to probably what the rate structure will be for us if we have to add all that into our budgets for the Electric Department. You know, that's where it's really going to affect people. Is if it changes what we have to do and what we're forced to do by the state, then the ratepayers are going to see that. And that's one of the things I'm worried about in it. And, you know, I want to oppose those parts. So, if we want to figure out how we specifically pick out the things we don't like and the things we like, and put that in the resolution, I'm fine with that. Because if that gets it the support so that it gets downstate and gets in front of the legislatures, you know, that's what I want. And that's what I think we all want to happen. You know, and the way I interpret what's written there is the things that would negatively affect Batavia are the things we want to oppose. The things that will help, you know, further what we all want to happen with the electric utility are, you know, okay with that. I'm okay with that.
Yes, we need to be more specific in our opposition as to what it is we don't like in the bill. Alderman Janssen?
So, we do. But I do trust that staff knows what we mean by the parameters that we've set based on the discussions that we've had, and to have a resolution on file.
No. So, Gary has written two memos, and he has gone subject by subject in each one of the four pieces of legislation. And so, and even calculated the costs to the utility for that. So, if there's additional information that you need to know, let staff know, and we'll go get that more information. But right now, I don't know what else.
What I'm saying is that I believe that this resolution keeps us nimble, is that it allows us to change our position a little bit, but still have something to hang our hat on.
Yes.
We haven't got nothing right now. We are not registering our position unless we say we're opposed.
That's my fear, is how many legislators will not know that in their current forms, we oppose those bills. But we, you can still direct staff, and we will continue to work with our representatives to ask for the changes that would make these things less impactful to our utility.
I appreciate the nuance here. What you're saying is, is we're opposed to this in its current form. We have gone on record in discussion here saying that there are ways we would support a bill like this, but not how it is now. We know that these guys will change on a dime sometimes. And we've got zero opposition. I would rather support this bill and trust staff to negotiate terms for us, because you've heard what our concerns are. I feel comfortable doing that. That's why I'm supporting this tonight. Even though it's not perfect, it's closer to perfect, and that's the best we can do tonight.
Thank you.
Alderman.
Yeah, and this goes back to the same concern that I raised when we were talking about this last week, is, you know, kicking the can and just pushing it farther and farther. I mean, who knows when these things might go to vote? And I think that if they get passed as they're currently worded, they're not going to be good for us. So, I think that what needs to be done is just, as Alderman Janssen said, just oppose it in its current form. And we're not sending a message that we're not working with people or that we're unwilling to do anything. It's just, we're opposed in its current format, that's all. And it doesn't mean that we wouldn't be supportive of a different format. I just think that we don't want to delay too much in case things get passed without having anything on the record for what we're trying to say.
Alderman.
Yeah, I think a more targeted approach would be more empowering to our representatives to be able to know when they're at the table. Okay, we can't, you know, these are not going to be supported. But to just send a blanket "no" to it doesn't help them at all. I think Gary did a fantastic job of outlining the legislation on how it would impact Batavia. But there's other pieces to the legislation that were not included in the memo that I think we need to show the things that we support, not just what we don't, what we oppose. And I would like to see a resolution that says, you know, the city of Batavia supports these things, but we can't accept these things, rather than just, nope, we're not in, you know, we're giving you a blanket "no, don't do that." And that's really not going to be an option for them to just say, no, we're not going to do it, because there's other pressure out there that they're, that our representatives are getting. And I think if we target it and be surgical about it, we're going to be more effective in influencing the final product of the legislation.
Alderman.
I disagree. I don't think it's a blanket "no." The resolution has outlined a bunch of things that say, this is the restriction of causes for Batavia, one after the other. And it didn't count exactly how many are in there. But there's several in there that say, this is what we oppose. So, it's not a blanket, hey, we don't want to do this. Maybe there could be additional verbiage that says, look, we support trying to create transparency across the state in other municipalities. Batavia's already moved forward to try and make things better for our customers. But this is not just a, hey, no, no, keep going. Keep going.
That's not the resolution, that's the memo.
If we send a memo with it, that outlines everything that would be a detriment to the city. And where we reference that in the resolution, attach the memo to it.
The resolution is a half a page.
So that there's backup for that, that that actually states in the memo, you know, in, what is it, five or six different spots for the different things that we would oppose. So, attach the memo from Gary from March 22 of 2024 to the resolution, to send with it. And those are the things that we oppose.
That's my assumption.
Alderman.
And then the other thing is, is you can't, they're not going to just vote on a portion of the bill. They're going to vote on the bill yes or no. You got to just say, we're opposed to the bill as it's worded. Here's reason, then, yeah, we can attach the memo. Here's reasons why. You want to try again, maybe in sending something different out, maybe we'll support that. But we can't support these as worded current. And that's it. Because they're not going to vote for part of the, part of the bill and not another part of the bill. It's just going to be the bill, yes or no down there. So, if we don't have a position, or if we're all wishy-washy about it, yeah, we kind of like it, we kind of don't. I mean, I don't still think that's effective either.
Alderman. Eamon?
When you met Representative Hershaw, did she have a suggestion on what would be beneficial for her coming from City Council with these bills, particularly the, was it the 5315?
She really didn't, other than to say that she wants to continue the conversation. She took notes on all of the different areas, in particular of 5315, that were of concern, because she is having a meeting tomorrow that committee is meeting. And so, she took down, you know, what she heard us say are the most important points about that bill to then go back and see if there could be some compromise.
Alderman.
Did she get a copy of Gary's memos?
I don't know if, we had them there, and she took notes down on them. And I think that I said that I would share them with her after the meeting. I just haven't been able to do that yet. But I definitely will.
I think that's the important piece, is that she be equipped and the colleagues that she works with of things that could be specifically addressed to take the burden that's being put on municipalities off. But still accomplishing the other goals, the transparency piece is huge. And I know, you know, Gary, you address that in that, you know, we are transparent on the city level. You know, we're open. But I'll be honest with you, though, we don't really know what's, you know, everything that is coming out of Prairie State and in our contract with them, we have non-disclosure agreements. And that's.
But it can't be disclosed to you. So, any information that you're requesting is available to you as the public body. But we, in order to receive that information, you have signed non-disclosure agreements. And those are legal documents that if we were put in this position of both being required to divulge that information, and we also had a legal agreement with consequences for the city for divulging the agreements, we would likely end up with, in litigation with someone over that situation.
We're a public body. We're elected to represent the people, but we can't really share that information, all the information. So, to be transparent.
There are certain exclusions that fall under FOIA for not, you do not have to divulge proprietary information of private corporations.
And that's one thing that's in this legislation that changes the exemptions for the Open Meetings Act. So, it's not just a blanket, you know, contracts with electric providers. As I don't remember the exact wording, but it basically takes out one sentence and defines it more narrowly of what can be exempted, what can be kept from the public. And so, it's those kind of things that I think are beneficial. And if we're just going to, you know, say, no, we're not for it, we're putting out the message there that, you know, Batavia supports continuing the status quo. Or, you know, special interests that are maybe not looking out for the best interest for all citizens are being.
Even elected to look out for those interests.
So, what's our pleasure here? Do we want to, Alderman Janssen?
I can think of one time in 14 years that I was asked not to share information. It was a proprietary rate study. At a time we were facing litigation. That's the one report I remember being asked not to share. Every other piece of information I've ever asked for, I've got and been able to share with the public. One study in 14 years. I don't feel like I have a muzzle on me.
We have constituents that are trying to get information, and they're being blocked from doing so. They're trying to educate.
They're not part of the organization.
So, it doesn't help them at all if we can't, if we can get it, but we can't share it with them?
Sure we can.
Really? What I just heard.
Depends on the information. And remember, FOIA is just a law. If someone asks for information, we can give it to them if they ask us for it. If it's not in a document form, they're going to get a FOIA back that says, hey, there's no document. Why don't you just ask me a question so I can answer for you? If a constituent wants information, let's say, tell me what you want to get, and we'll find the information for you. Your answer to your question may exist between five documents. So, we are transparent. In fact, if anything, we are more than transparent because we will guide people on how to get the information they want.
Yes, you know, our experience under FOIA, even if information is in five different places, but it would be more helpful to the person to have it in one place, and it's not moving a mountain for us to throw that spreadsheet together, we create it for people. You know, I think, ask Carl Dinwiddie if he feels like we are transparent, and he will say adamantly, yes.
That's all I'm saying. It's not as bad as it seems, honestly. And that document exists just because it is a quasi-organization. And we obviously will never do this again. So.
What's our point? Are we going to make a motion? Or are we continuing for another meeting, or?
I would make the motion that we approve the resolution and amend it to include the memo that states the specifics that we are opposed to within those bills.
There are two memos, just for clarification, yeah.
Okay. The two memos then that we've had during March. One was on the 22nd, and you said the other one was 14th, whatever the first memo was. If we could include those two memos on it as an amendment, then I would propose that we, you know, pass the ordinance with those amended and added to it.
Okay.
Just to clarify, you're proposing first to amend the resolution to include the two memos first? Okay.
Correct. And then we would vote on the resolution with the amendment, if we approve the amendment. Okay. So, the amendment that I would have would be to add the two memos from Gary Holm to the resolution to send to our representatives.
I would add it, like to amend the amendment to include the, those items which we would favor out of this legislative, these legislative bills.
Because I don't know what those are.
Exactly.
Yet.
Exactly.
Because those might also change. I just want to say.
We don't know what they are yet.
Why does that matter? If they don't outweigh it, it doesn't matter.
I just want to oppose the things that we're against.
I understand.
That we are against. Because I don't know what the things are that are proposed or are being proposed even tomorrow. I just want to oppose the things that I know are a detriment to the city. And I think that that's the best way to go after this to begin with.
And I support that. But I also think we need to put out the message what we do support.
Then we can put together a second one, and we can send that out. I just feel like if there's a meeting tomorrow and we can approve this tonight, we can email it to all the representatives, either tonight or tomorrow.
Wouldn't Gary make a motion? I hear a second on his motion to amend. So, I think that's where we're at right now before you can even try to amend something that hasn't even been amended yet. So, I think that's where we're at, is we have a motion by Alderman Wolf. So I think that's where we're at, is we have a motion by Alderman Wolf, we got a second by Alderman Janzit, on amending, but to add the two memos.
So that would be the one I'll call the vote on now, or ask to call the vote on.
Right, the vote then is on the motion to amend.
Amend the resolution to add those two, to add those two.
And then we vote again about adding the two.
Memos on it.
Then we voted, then we voted. If there's a motion to.
Everybody understand the motion?
Alderman Barron has a comment.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? If I'm understanding this correctly, based on what you said last week, right now where it's at is it's kind of within committee, which is a very small group of individuals, including the sponsors of that bill, correct?
I think that there are like 15 people on committees.
Okay. So obviously our representative for whichever one of these bills, and we know one bill has completely changed, based on what you said. I'm not sure if I'm totally on board with blasting this out to all representatives because they'll probably see it and be like, what is this? And then if, you know, we're talking about one bill and then all of a sudden it gets all switched and changed. I think we need to be more strategic. It's my recommendation, we'd be a little bit more strategic on who we are sending this memo with. I agree that should go to Representative Herschauer since she is on, on there. But I do think that, to Tony's point, once we know a little bit more of what is coming out with these bills, to be more pinpoint of what we still are not liking about the bills.
Definitely. I would recommend that we send it to all of our own elected officials, whether they be in the House or Senate, and then also to every single member of the committee that this legislation is before, so that as they discuss things, they know the parts of the bill that we're opposed to. And by not being opposed to it would suggest that we're fine with the other parts of the bill, but these are just the specific parts that we are opposed to.
I guess I didn't, wasn't clear. I wasn't saying to send it to all the representatives. I was saying to send to our representatives. And I think Laura makes a good point that it should be also everybody that's on the committee. So our representatives and then the committee members would be the ones that I would think we would send it to.
Yes, Juan. Because it sounded like we were going to be blasting this out to, you know, people that will be voting on this until midnight two weeks from now.
No, I want the people that are talking about it tomorrow to know about it so that they can know what we're opposed to.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have to be strategic on what we present to them and not just, you know, just an overarching, you know, we're opposed of this. I think we do need to be very strategic to make sure that those things that really matter to our residents, to our constituents, you know, that we're addressing, that would have an impact on them.
Our first motion will be on the motion to amend.
Right, to add the two memos to it.
And add the two memos to it. Any further discussion?
Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
No.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
No.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Aye, no.
Aye.
Thank you. Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Peeper?
Aye.
Janzit?
Aye.
Nine yes, three no, two absent.
Motion to approve. Alderman Wolf, you have another memo?
And I will make the motion that we approve Resolution 202443R as amended.
By Wolf, second by Sulfah, for the approval of Resolution 2024-43-R. Any further discussion as amended?
Your honor.
Alman, back.
Yeah, one last comment. I just wanted to say that the, the folks that I reached out to specifically about House Bill 5315, I was able to get same-day meetings. They were really receptive. They said we were willing to speak to anybody. I think getting our questions answered also in the context of the folks with their intent and what they are trying to achieve and asking the specifics, I mean, I've got a couple pages of notes here that I get in some of the specifics on things that I asked them, was really interesting. I think that we owe our constituents going, you know, going to the source, getting answers and understanding these a little bit better sometimes. So I have the cell phone number of a few of the people that I was able to speak to. So if anybody else wants to reach out to them, they said they were hoping they'd hear from us.
Kirk, call the roll then on the motion as amended.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
No.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
No.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer, absent. Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Peeper?
No.
Janzit?
Aye.
Oh, boy. Eight yes, four no, two absent.
I guess I'd like to propose that on the next call, we have a discussion on the things we like about that bill or any of those bills, so we can also send that to them. Thank you.
All right. Moving then to item 11, which is the Administrator's Report. Laura.
Thank you. In community and economic development, we're going to have a Plan Commission meeting that has been continued to April 3rd, this Wednesday, for the Polte Ashton Ridge Project. And then we're going to have the downtown, downtown plan public hearing will be on April The Police Department has published their annual report and that information is available on our website on the Police Department page. And in Public Works, the plans for Carriage Crest drainage improvements, the bid is going to be issued here soon. And it's anticipated that construction will commence probably by late April or early May, and it's likely a project that's going to continue into the fall. Our contractor on the South River Street improvements remains on track to complete the utility work as scheduled. We're aware of the Quarry Beach opening date and we're kind of using that as a target to make sure that we have the improvements completed by that time. And then from Finance, we got our tentative tax extensions. Our city tax rate actually decreased a little bit from 73.5 cents per every $100 of EAV to 72.8 cents. And that is a small reduction, but we're glad that we can keep that steady rate while still capturing the higher EAV from just growth that we're experiencing. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Questions? Alman?
Yes.
Mahoney Creek, is that, I'm glad to see it's raining a lot because that should help with the situation.
Yes.
But has there been any update recently?
So cleaning, the cleaning efforts continue. So on a daily basis, they go to the more than 40 booms which have been installed in the creek and then just at the entrance to the Fox River and collect any of the foam that is there. And it's being held on tanks on their property as well. They're cleaning their own property of this foam. So there's been a lot of remediation there. There are so many meetings. We've been meeting with, today with King County Health Department so that we can come up with a plan for contacting people within a certain radius of the creek who have private wells on their property in order to get a plan for testing those in the future. As well, we are all anticipating our test results coming back for the PFAS as well. And so Lori Botterman is busy, you know, trying to anticipate communicating with folks. I think next week will be a very big communications week for us on the Mahoney Creek project. But I have been impressed by how all parties are working together on this. It's the county, it's the IEP, it's the company, it's each one of our environmental consultants are in near constant communication about all of it. So we're working hard on it. Thank you for the question.
Comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have other business from the city council? Alderman Barron?
So I appreciate the, Laura sending out the TRICOM minutes to us. And it kind of thought, to my mind, another level of transparency of why should, should we be posting those on our website?
It was Tri-City Ambulance, I believe, is what you sent to us, right? We asked for the ambulance.
Do you want TRICOM too?
It was Tri-City Ambulance that got sent out to us last week.
I thought it was TRICOM.
No.
On that.
The link to the.
From St. Charles?
Yeah, that's Tri-City Ambulance.
Right.
Okay.
They do the administration for Tri-City Ambulance from St. Charles.
Okay.
Three towns work together and they handle the administration.
Yeah. So for. Tri-City Ambulance, the city of St. Charles handles the administration. And then for TRICOM, Geneva handles the administration. And so traditionally, their, that is the place where they do their online public posting is on each of those respective towns' websites. But if you search for minutes for TRICOM, it should take you to the city of St. Charles agendas and minutes where all of that is located.
So I just thought maybe for our residents, instead of making them try to go to all these different websites, you know, make a repository for what matters with our community having those minutes there for them to be able to access.
One thing that we could do is make sure on our TRICOM and Tri-City Ambulance page, we can direct them right to that repository. I'll make sure that that's simply the push of a button and they're right where they need to be to get those agendas and minutes. Good suggestion. Thank you.
Right, it's not easy to find it if you didn't know where it was. So if we had a link on our website, that would be a good thing.
If you had questions about the meetings, by all means, 70 questions, or we're lucky enough to have his honor as the Chair of Tri-City to share whatever's going on if we'd like to ask him directly at our meetings. We're lucky we got him here.
I just look at it from a, you know, how we do our business here with the links and everything, you know, because I was like, oh, look at a budget, and there was no budget details there. So I was like, you know, that, that might be my next ax, ask down the road of being able for us to have that transparency, you know, even some of our residents who may be wanting that.
It's in the monthly packets of financials.
Okay. Yeah, I tried, based on the link I was looking for and didn't see it, so.
Any other questions?
All right, Beck.
Have we ever thought about going down and actually testifying at one of the committee meetings and kind of sharing our point of view there so that we can kind of hear in real time how our position is being received?
We can definitely do that. However, Stacy Wilson from IMUA, you know, she typically is, that's a role that she plays down there. And I'm sure that she would welcome if a city representative from a municipal utility would want to join her for those times when she is asked to participate in the discussion.
Okay, finally, the mayor's report. I just want to offer a couple of observations. As most of you know, I have, have the honor of serving as the Chairman of the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Plannings Council of Mayors, and we meet downtown. And we're kind of a regional organization that makes up the six counties plus the city of Chicago. And so we, there's a political side to this whole thing. And so one of the things we talk about in there is, is things we've talked about here tonight. Where is the Illinois General Assembly and where is the US Congress on this or that or what are they doing? And the political wisdom that I gather, sitting there and listening to the conversation is, is that there's an opinion by those who studied on a day-to-day basis that right now, Illinois government is on the skids. And that, you know, we can get excited about a lot of stuff here tonight, but there's a pretty strong opinion that probably not much of anything is going to happen in 2024. Maybe some things will start to happen in 2025, but there's probably not much going to happen. You've got a presidential election, which is a big impact situation that's at the end of the year. And so I've talked to several of our state representatives about various pieces of legislation. And I kind of get the same sense from them that we're in kind of a holding period down here right now. And so, you know, any of you that were worried about some piece of legislation getting enacted, I'm not sure any of this stuff is going to go anyplace. Probably a year from now, maybe yes, but right now it's, it's in a real holding pattern and nobody wants to make too much noise about anything that's going on. In our own town, we are cited in there, in Chicago, as Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles are three of the stronger communities in the Chicagoland area as far as growth and community successes, school test scores, crime rates, public safety facilities. We get pretty good standing on all of them as far as our ability to perform and deliver to the taxpayer their, their money that they're getting. So there's a lot of towns, I'll say, are underneath us that don't have all this good stuff going that we do. But we really are in probably, I don't know, top 10% of all the cities in the region, we're looked upon with great favor. And as they say in there, they can see it right now on the streets, that there is a significant shift in the real estate community that's heading in this direction. And it's kind of already here. Out there on Kirk Road, we've just completed building 242 new single, not single family, they're attached townhouse units there at Wind Energy and Kirk Road. I believe every one of them is sold. They're fully, they're fully, if they're not occupied yet, they're going to be. And out on Window Mill, what do we call that, Winding Creek out on McKee Street, there's 163 units in that. And I'm told that about 75 to 80% of those are sold or leased under contract, they're not built. But there's a, there's a pretty strong demand of people wanting to move into Batavia and be here as, as part of this community. So this is, we're in a good position. There's a lot of other towns that kind of wish that they had all the good things going for us. It kind of struck me yesterday. I went down to the Lincoln Inn for the buffet that they had for Easter Sunday, and I get there and I've known the owners of the Lincoln Inn for several generations. And it's kind of changed down there now, but those who are down there all know me. And I come in the door and they get, one of the gentlemen, the owner, comes running over to me and says, I can't believe what's happened here today. I've got over 1,000 reservations to come into the Lincoln Inn for this buffet. So he says, I've had to divide it up, starting at 10:00 in the morning, 11, 12, 1, and 2. I got five different settings of 200 people each in the dining room because I've got so much business coming in here. So I just share that with you, that show you how business is kind of, and the right things during the right times are pretty good here. So we've got a lot, a lot of stuff that we should be very pleased and proud of that we have going. And hopefully you take that as a positive note because I think it is. So now, I guess we're going to go to, you're going to make a motion to recess and then...
We'll adjourn and then just recess for five minutes in between meetings.
You want to do it that way then?
Yeah, that's fine.
And you, Alderman Wolf is senior alderman, runs the committee as a whole meeting, so he will be running the second part of this. So you want to make a motion for us to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.